Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock. I call this meeting of the Fox Point Village Board to order. It's April 9, 2019, and we're at Chum Hall, 7200 North San Monica Boulevard. Welcome. I'll ask a question. You can call the board.
Trustee Fonstad?
Here.
Trustee Simcic?
Here.
Trustee Sumner?
Here.
Trustee Torado? Trustee Crowe?
Here.
Here. Just a second.
Trustee Bollman?
Here.
President Frazier?
Here. I have two persons desiring to be heard. This is a citizen opportunity to be heard on either side or off the agenda. Everybody gets three minutes. You can divide your time any way you want. So if you want to speak now, you can do it in three minutes. If you want to divide your time now when the agenda items are called, that's permitted. Or if you want to defer your time until the agenda items are called, that's permitted, too. We have speaker cards. I have several. If you haven't delivered enough to us speaker card, please do. We'll start with Ed Ricker. Is it Ricker? Rick. Rick. Please state your name and your address, Rick.
Okay. Ed Ricker, 221 West Calumet Road. The reason I'm here is to talk about the resurfacing of Calumet Road. I'm a 30-year-plus resident of Fox Point, and I must say first, I've enjoyed living here quite a bit, and I appreciate the great services that you've provided. But my wife and I have two concerns about Calumet Road. In the past, we affectionately call it kind of a highway. We take daily walks, and we've seen the village turnover, I think, in a positive note. There's more families coming in, younger children. What I'm concerned is the resurfacing of Calumet Road. We think it's great that it's being resurfaced. We also approve the idea of widening it, but we think that by resurfacing, it's going to create even faster traffic. And we think that by promoting the sides of the road to be widened, there will be more traffic of walking, dogs, people with babies. So we'd like to see maybe in the future a possibility of a four-way stop somewhere along Calumet Road. We think that that would be a nice possibility of slowing traffic down. We do notice that Calumet Road isn't the only road, east-west road, major road in Fox Point without a four-way stop, and it is also the only east-west road that has a school. So we'd like to see a four-way stop somewhere, maybe even on Navajo. I think, I don't, I'm not sure which road you prefer, but that would be up to you, of course. We also like to see a possibility, a little bit more signage at the school. Of course, living across the street, and my wife is also a schoolteacher there, and she lets out the kids at school. Nobody seems to notice the 15 mile an hour speed limit because they don't go 15 miles an hour. And we do notice that Mapleville has a pretty prominent signage. We'd like to see maybe something like that. And we're also very concerned about Calumet and Mohawk. One of the problems is that when you come up Calumet Road and the stoplight is changing, you seem to speed up quite a bit to get through the light or take a left on Mohawk, and maybe a pedestrian sign there might slow them down. I'd like to give you, I don't know if you received this, I want the principal of the school to type the letter. It just wants to be on record for concerns. So really, that's about it. We have noticed an increase in traffic, especially service trucks, and certain times of the day, we notice quite a bit of speeding. And I can't, we're concerned that resurfacing is like a dragster. It just creates more faster traffic. And I don't know if my three minutes are up or...
You're right there. You're right there.
Right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, what do I do next as far as following up or...
You could follow up with the village manager.
Okay. Thank you.
Ramsey, your partner?
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate all your time. My comments are related to the same things as Ed Ricker's, is that I live on Mohawk, which is right on the corner of Calumet and 7559, which is right on the corner of Mohawk and Calumet. A lot of the same concerns that the Rickers have that I have as well about traffic, the speed, and volume. I was excited to hear about the resurfacing. I called the TBW director when I heard about this and kind of mentioned that some traffic calming features should be considered with the roadway, whether there be stop signs or some other aspects to try to slow down traffic. And they keep controlling it pretty regularly, and we get all mornings and stuff like that with it. They're not there. It doesn't solve a lot. I have two young children, 12 and eight, and we go across the street to the school lots, kind of used to play around in the parking lot over there in the grass area to play catch. And I always kind of worry about them as well, and where they don't play catch, or something like that. So we've got a couple occasions when I'm trying to back out in the morning, and as Ed mentioned, cars cut in that corner pretty fast to try to avoid the light, or they'd actually, I'm backing out, come around the corner, and they try to between me and my driveway, you know, to try to avoid it. And I hope the police somebody come and respond as best. But again, if you don't have a presence there, and you're not catching anybody, they're still in the way. So it's one of the concerns I have, and I ask that just that, I know we're probably pretty far along, so there's maybe not much to do, not options, but as Ed Ricker mentioned, maybe some stop signs or some cluster blocks and things of those features be considered to help pedestrians to traffic and pedestrian replacement use and traffic calming features.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Fulton? Steve Fulton?
Yeah, my name is Steve Fulton. I live at 7737 North Bell in Fox Point, and I'm here to support what Mr. Ricker has brought to the attention of the board this evening. And I just, I have a dog, and I do a lot of walking around Fox Point, and at the present time, I do everything in my power to avoid walking along the shoulder of Calumet Road because it just literally is not safe with the amount of traffic that drives down Calumet Road and the speed at which a lot of people drive down Calumet Road. And I believe that once the project is completed and Calumet Road is resurfaced, I think without some form of control to slow the traffic down, Calumet, it won't be any safer to walk down the shoulder than it is right now. So that's my concern, and I think another thing that might aid in the traffic, the speed of the traffic, especially by St. Eugene School and that intersection right there at Mohawk where people turn on South on Mohawk to avoid the light at Port Washington Road. I think the light at Port Washington Road and Calumet Road, I think it ought to be adjusted so that the traffic, which is traveling west on Calumet, when they approach Port Washington Road, if they had more time to make a left turn north-south, or you can turn right on red, so that's not a huge issue, but the speed increases because the, as you're approaching Port Washington Road, because that is such a short traffic light. And that's just a suggestion on my behalf, and again, I'm here to support what Ramsey and Ed Ricker mentioned, and I look forward to the project, and I look forward to having it completed. So thank you for everything that everybody does in Fox Point.
Thank you, sir. Stephen Library Director Susan Draker Anderson. Please. Draker Anderson.
Hello, Susan Draker Anderson from the North Shore Library. I just wanted to give you a quick update on some of the things that have been going on at the library. I believe you're aware that the Glendale mayor came to the library board in February to challenge the foundation to raise $1 million as part of the library renovation project. On March 11, the Glendale Council put a motion forward to request the North Shore Library Foundation to engage in private fundraising for a minimum of 25% contribution to the North Shore Library building renovation project, and this motion was passed or carried. Paul Peterson, then, he's the president of the Library Foundation. He came to the March 21 Library Board meeting to discuss this. He reported that he had met with three fundraising consultants and reviewed the Friends of the Footbridge contract. One of the consultants was the executive director of the Milwaukee Public Library Foundation, who was a paid employee with a staff of five. And Peterson also met with a professional fundraiser, Jean Gurney, who did fundraising for the Shawwood and Whitefish Bay Library renovation projects back in 2002 or '03. He also met with a third person, who was a marketing consultant, and all three were really helpful to him. Peterson shared that Gurney reported that it took five years to raise the funds for Shawwood and Whitefish Bay libraries. He also reported that it took about two, Christine and Eric can be better at this, but he said two to three years to raise the Footbridge funding? No? He reported that three of the consultants stressed that all four communities had to be on board and on the same page. There needs to be some document that says that they are all in, a guarantee. Without that, the consultants did not feel like the fundraising could be successful. He also stated that the foundation would need a drop date. When is this project going to happen before any campaign could begin? The cost of hiring a fundraiser was reported to be $100,000 to $200,000 to raise $1 million. This is in line with what, about 10% to 20%. This was in line with what the Footbridge consultants' fee was, $45,125,000 to fundraise $515,000. So in any case, he, Paul Peterson, met with Mayor Kennedy last week, and it was his understanding that Mayor Kennedy will be contacting the village presidents to determine the actual project date, and additionally, to develop a memorandum of understanding authorizing the North Shore Library to proceed with the project. Also, just for your, just to let you know, Paul Peterson, Kirk Blasner, and I have also been looking at various software packages that can assist with this fundraising project. The library board, the next library board meeting is April 18, and the foundation will meet on April 25. The foundation board has actually not even yet agreed to do the fundraising, but Paul has moved forward with it. So that's all I had to report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard at this point of the meeting? You'll have your translator as the agenda items are called. Okay, hearing none, we move to the committee reports, agenda items ready. The planning commission met last week, and Mr. Fonstad will report. Mr. Fonstad?
Yes, there are several items on the agenda for the planning commission last week. One was land combination at 7210 North Garnett. This is in the consent agenda as item 5C. As we've had considered land combinations in the past, there's really, there's really nothing to requirements that have been met other than coming up with certified survey map. The, that those materials are, the board materials, I would point out that there could be a little confusing because in one of the surveys, there are actually four lots shown, and it's just the two lots on the left side that are being mined. There's kind of a front piece in the back piece, and that's shown in the survey map that the, in any case, the planning commission recommended that the board approve the land combination except for the preliminary survey map as planned. The next item that the planning commission considered was a conditional use permit for pure Otis Quote kindergarten that was to be located at, in the shops by Green Tree in San Monica. We have in front of you a letter or a shot of an email indicating that the applicant has withdrawn that application, so that is on the current agenda as item L. We'll have to deal with that when we get to it. Then we considered the conditional use permit application. We'll try to add a coffee bar inside the shop. If you're familiar with the facility, it's, if you come to the door, it would just be curled around to the left on that wall, right next to the big cross curbs. They would have a window that would be, that they could open in the vestibule so they could provide coffee before the regular opening hours. They normally don't, but I think at 10:00.
Correct.
The applicant is in the back with a bicycle on him. Anyway, the, you'll see in the materials that they're requesting operating hours for this coffee feature from AAM to ATM, so they would be able to provide coffee, I guess for staff and anybody else who comes into this vestibule. That application was, the planning commission recommended that the board approve that application, and that is item 5M on the agenda. Next, the planning commission considered two ordinances relating to vacation rentals. One is the, is a building-related ordinance that is on the books right now under the time chair topic, and because of legislation adopted in Madison, that ordinance has been superseded by state law, so that is fairly straightforward. We need to remove from the books. That's scheduled for a public hearing tonight, item 4A and for action, as new as this, anyway, it's 6D. And the other item relating to vacation rentals is an ordinance which replaces the one that, time chair ordinance. Time chair ordinance basically prohibited rentals of less than 120 days in the box of life, as they say, the state laws have superseded that. So back in, going back in January, we first started looking at replacement ordinance, working with the village attorney. And the planning commission considered this topic at its March meeting. We have presentation from the village attorney. We reviewed and discussed the features that would be in the ordinance. We also reviewed memorandum from the village attorney dated March 4, in which he addressed various recommendations, I think, from the board at its, I don't know if it was February meeting, I think, anyway, it was, anyway, those recommendations that the village attorney made were incorporated into a new ordinance, so that those village ordinance were incorporated all, except the one request that was made had to do with inspections, and the village attorney had recommended that we not include inspection requirement in the ordinance. So that was not put in. There were two additional permissions put in, as Ray's out of the planning commission reviewing the ordinance. One has to do with adding the names and changes of persons who would be staying in a rental facility, a vacation rental facility, who are under age 18. Another has to do with recognizing that although a property may be licensed to, for vacation rental, it still needs to be operated as a residence, and that those two are reflected in the ordinance that are, that are, the materials for the meeting, and that the change is the planning commission recommended that the board approve and adopt that ordinance. By the way, I note that we also, the board is also considering wireless communication and radio aid ordinances that were referred to the planning commission. The planning commission had its March 4 meeting, recommended that those ordinances be adopted, so that had already been done, and we didn't have to do it last week. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Fonstad and his very comprehensive summary? Hearing none, we move to agenda items four. We have, our agenda for public hearings is either 4A and B. The first was the ordinance in connection with partnership of properties. The second is the retain or recreation of wireless telecommunications local service facilities ordinance. I move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Simcic? All those appearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is open. Does anyone wish to be heard on items 4A and B? Seeing none, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Fonstad, second. All those appearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is closed. Consent agenda.
I see what you're saying.
We have another public hearing.
Excuse me?
I, I opened the public hearing before that. So did you?
Yes.
Oh, great. I was, I opened shortly.
Item 5, the consent agenda. I'll ask the village attorney for his recommendation concerning item 5L, which has been withdrawn. We could remove from the consent agenda in case of, or postponed indefinitely, but would the village attorney recommend?
I, I remove it. Most likely.
Very well. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? I wish to remove item 5L from the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to move another item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda absent item 5L.
Second.
Mr. Fonstad moves. Mr. Torado, second. All those appearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is approved, except for item 5L, which we will take up on new business. Unfinished business. 6A, approximately located at 411 East Bradley Road. I'll turn this over to the village manager.
Oh, sorry. We're talking in back and forth. 411 East Bradley Road, the status report is, the demolition is going to proceed as soon as We Energies finishes their gas, gas disconnect. Gas disconnect. They had to disconnect the gas system in the middle. That was a scooter, it was tough. So that's the report on 411 East Bradley Road, or simply waiting for the utility company to finish.
6B, the property won't hit it at 139 East.
Correct. They were actually supposed to be here tonight. Is this here correct? I had the inspector calling to confirm. The last time I had a conversation with the inspector, there's still plenty to move ahead with the renovation. The next step is to gut the building. They want to almost gut the whole thing, and they go back in, but they were, I was told they were going to be here this evening, so that's six things on the board.
Questions for the village manager, for Simcic?
Well, it sounds that the village manager can't answer my question, but I thought we had been pretty clear in our expectations that they provide regular updates, and I will see.
Now, so, Mr. Bollman?
Do you know if the fully furnished yet?
Do not. Well, I know that 6A has not full permits, but they're going to pull them as soon as they're available.
Just be.
B, to my knowledge, they're not.
I've gone past actually so often now, I haven't seen anything changed since.
Well, I have concerns because, you know, we had given them a timeline, which I believe was June 1, so we could put a better amount of money in refresh, but we expected to see progress or evidence of progress, and certainly pulling a permit would be some indication of possible progress. You know, I also, during the life of property, I've never seen anyone there doing anything or, you know, any sort of activity that we've, when I associated that. I have real concerns.
Mr. Fonstad?
And that's the village manager. What contact he's had from the property owner after our last meeting?
I've had the inspector make contact, and what I did at the Father Grillo last week, I handed in Mr. Mayfield, who was the gentleman who appeared here last time, his contact information. He immediately called him, had a discussion. I was in the room when he had the discussion, and he indicated that he would be present at the meeting tonight to give this report.
Anyone else? I share Mr. Simcic's concerns and others' concerns that this is not moving forward the way we expect. I don't know if we're agenda for action promised tonight, but I think the next step would be to direct staff in the village attorney to prepare how to initiate a conversation with him.
And we are agenda for non-action. And I'm...
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying.
I'm wondering if, though I'd like to hear from the village attorney as to what our options are for taking some sort of action for, or dissolving this.
Well, I, you could issue citations. You could start charging reinspection fees. You could commence the raising process. As to, as to that, or commencement of the raising process, it's not something that we file in court tomorrow. It's preparation of oral inspectors' report, saying, here are all the problems, give them a period of time, and say, fix these problems. And if they are not fixed by that period of time, then we could. So we probably would not be in court by the next meeting.
But we could issue citations and instructions.
Yes. You do that right away?
I imagine if you, if we wanted, if we commenced the raising process, what would, what exactly would we do to commence it?
I, you would just direct the staff to commence the raising process. Again, the first step would be the village inspector. The village inspector would do an investigation, prepare a report, and issue an order, saying, you have to fix these things in a period of time. For example, before the next meeting.
Well, it sounds like if we, the board wants to be in a position to act on a raising, then that would be a good step to take. You know, we, it is not a, we're a goalbook step. We do the inspection, and the property owner demonstrates to our satisfaction.
If we can, we do the inspection and the, the property owner demonstrates to our satisfaction that he is willing to correct the problems of the property and go forward with the plan C outline in a realistic way, then we just have, we can just stop the process. Is that right?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Are you talking about citation one per day or one per month?
Good question, Mr. Attorney.
Each day that it's not in problem appears a separate violation. So, that is a policy question. Typically, we have issued once a week and you wouldn't necessarily have to be so generous to do that every single day.
Do you have any questions?
Actually, honestly, we typically leave that to the discretion of the officer of rate.
I mean, you don't need a permit to go clean the place up on the outside. I'm talking about the garbage and everything they rob. They can at least be doing that while you get a permit. They're about the same.
Right. Well, my patience has been expended. I've been giving the ordinance to overly generous with this property owner and I would be in favor of bringing the whole course of the law down in every way we can.
Thanks. All right.
Well, I think, yes, you know, I, I understand and agree with the sentiment. I think the object objective is to send a very clear message to the owner that unless things really expect to happen very quickly, we will follow along the rating. Yes, I just, I'm sorry. What, what does that mean? I don't know if we, you know, the citations cost money for the property owner. I mean, that's, and bring revenue for us, I guess, but I don't think those are the prime objective. I think the prime objective is to give the property.
Right. And I, but we, these aren't mutually exclusive remedies. We might be pursuing all of them to send a clear message and maybe get some traction. But I agree, if, if we should probably start the process to raise this property gap, why waste any more time, some change?
Well, I, I think a violation only brings in revenue, so somebody actually pays it. So, I don't know if it's really meaning anything here, which is awful.
Well, we do have a collection, aren't we? Something with the.
Well, yeah, of course we do, but, you know, we've been chasing these people around for a lot, a while. So, I would actually move that we commence the raising process. My rationale being that that will do exactly what Mr. Konstadt wanted to do, which is to perhaps get some action or not, and there's no sense in making, because.
Was that a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we commence the raising process.
All right. Why don't we divide the issue and take it one by one? Any further discussion on commencing the raising process? Yes, Mr. Attorney.
I said a question. It's a combination order. Yeah, sorry. Between a raise order and a condemnation.
I'll ask the village attorney to distinguish between the two of those.
Is there a real difference?
It is different. We are not, we're not buying this. It's not, it's not a condemnation in the sense of taking. It's, it's, we are going to tell them, you have to repair it or it will raise it. If you don't, we're going to go in or.
To raise ourselves.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. So, I'm correct that I used the wrong term? And the cost of raising goes without effect or?
I'll defer to the village attorney on that question.
I, we have been successful in getting courts to order that in the past and that would be our goal and we get the court to order reimbursing at all costs.
Further?
And they would go on the tax roll.
Further discussion? All right. Under question, I will be forward with a raise order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's now take up citations. Is there a consensus to direct the board that, is there a sense to the board that the staff should feel free to issue citations if it feels so moved?
I mean, I would hope that this raising would be enough to help them, you know, do something. I don't necessarily, I think it seems right that we can issue all the cases in one, but they may not be on, but this is like pretty, pretty current timing. Twenty twenty.
Mr. Konstadt. Yeah. I think getting a citation, even though it may be just a caution, it may not be for a lot of other purposes. I am looking for property and gives more, then, then this, the property owner, I think would more likely understand this is, this isn't really happening. It's not just a scorch to prove any motion to. So, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm all right with issuing authorized citation coming, even though we need to authorize citations. That's really up to the.
It's a, well, it's, it's a discretionary staff decision, but I think, you know, give staff a sense of the board upon the issue, you know? Yeah, we would appreciate it. I, I hear Mr. Konstadt on this, when I get a ticket, I, I pay attention to it and I think that that is the goal here, is to get property owners attention. And I think a citation may be a tool to do that, isn't it?
You know, I'm, I'm, I don't really have a problem with it. You know, I, I think a raise order is kind of a, a tension hitter.
Well, the thing is that, the problem is that there won't be a raise order for quite a while.
Right.
Yeah, there's a process.
The citation is something that could be issued, and would, I think, completely effectively once that.
Yeah, I, I would not be opposed.
I hear, I'll hear from Mr. Omen and then Mr. Drado. I believe you've got citations in the past. Curious if that could most affect the course. Mr. Drado?
Yeah, my question was similar. Are there current citations on this property now that are outstanding and not due to even, and I would, you know, there's not such a important.
Good, good questions. Good questions. All right. So, is it the consensus of the board that the staff may give a discretion issue citations to this property owner? Hearing no objection, that is the sense of the board. Re-inspection fees. How do you feel about re-inspection fees? I mean, this does cost the village time and resources to be re-inspecting this property. Should we be shifting this cost to this property? Mr. Konstadt?
Doesn't sound like there's been any changes to re-inspection. You know, I, I, I think the citation probably is where I'm right now.
Listen to.
Well, I think we're going with the citations. I think, yes, I mean, the re-inspection, the re-inspection fees are not to be inspected for progress as much as they are to inspect that for progress as well. And so, I, I would agree with that. I mean, because it is, it is independent verification of what might, or might not happen.
Yeah. You know, to the extent that the re-inspection is required or is appropriate in connection with citations, then I think the fees are being charged back.
Mr. Omen?
I know those, can those be put on the tax roll if you just pay them? I understand personally not, but re-inspector fees for doing that.
Yes, they can, they can go on the tax. If they go to like, if he has the time to pay, if he has to pay them, they can go on the tax roll as a special charge.
The citations, so they look through the.
Citations go through your municipal.
Maybe, maybe more of a taxing situation.
Yes.
And, you know, that would not. The citations would be different. The re-inspection.
So, is the sense of the board that the staff at this discretion should feel free to turn back our time for the inspection fees? All right, the staff has the sense of the board on that. Any further issues on item six B? Oh. Sir, do you wish to be heard on item six B of the agenda?
No thanks.
Just wanted to give everybody their chance. Very well. Thank you. We'll move to item six C, the aquatic facility study presentation. Mr. Drado, the chair of the pool committee, has been strictly, that's how I should introduce this item. Mr. Drado?
Yeah, we have a representative from Caraco Aquatica here to represent the lead engineer for air, something to make it. But he did truly kind of lead the public meeting on this topic and also made the sense of meeting at the pool committee, the last one we had, which was eleven months or so ago. It took a lot of input and feedback and so these two gentlemen from pool committee at that meeting. And I know that they made several updates and changes based on the committee to the report that was provided to the board in advance. So, going that direction, let's turn over, do the presentation and afterwards I can kind of address a couple of things, like the, where the board wants to kind of go next or what.
Right. To start off, could you introduce yourself and tell us who you're with?
Absolutely, absolutely. My name is Patrick Pegan. I'm with Caraco, engineer, so architecture engineer for buildings and pools. Like the councilor said, play T-Son with airs. This is really the site master planner, gonna be here tonight, so I'm going to my spot. And then we have Matt Caraco here, the management personnel.
I'm Matt Caraco with Caraco Aquatics and we were part of the team working on more of the operational end of the pool, trying to put together ideas for how it will run if it were to be built.
Yeah, any clarification? Caraco Aquatics Services, majority of the public pools in the state of Wisconsin are all of the operations. They actually have facility managers that give us a little management experience in terms of doing programs. So, we've been on Caraco Aquatics for a lot of our budget numbers, purchasing the report. So, what I wanted to do tonight was just really give you a quick overview of what you're going to find in the report. So, this is, this is not all of that. This is maybe ten, twelve slides. You know, I don't know what we did and then we answer any questions that you have. Go from there.
You need to touch the screen too. You need to touch the screen.
Does it? It was working before we started.
There you go. Now, I'm in the air.
Yeah.
I think.
You can do a manually right here.
Yeah, you just want.
You tell me when.
Yeah. Go ahead. So, through what we did is we wanted to find what the real potential was for facility in front of only, and that could be the size and scale. That was personal we did here. We did do it in public forum. We did feedback. We also collected information online, a little information that we did via Twitter, Facebook page, play with the grand act, who knows that better than I do. And then we had several meetings with the pool committee to discuss different options and that type of. So, one of the things we did is we documented all of the aquatic facilities that are in your general area. Okay, so I knew that sets a five mile radius, that dash line. And so, what we did not do is if it was a project club, we didn't document that, let's remember as long as you're not really, you know, in public, public pool community, like other facilities are in a bond, those are in a bond with individual residences, like you had a school today. And we only looked at public pools, school pools, splash pads and. Can you go back one?
Yep.
So, once we had that information, what we do is we find service area. So, we take the adjacent communities, we find the midway point. That's what you'll see in the dark dash line. And then inside of that dark dash line, we're able to find out what the population is. So, we see a service area and that's the, see what actual capacity there is in terms And then at the public process, we presented all these designs and then we presented imagery of what sort of features do you like, which ones do you not like, try to get a feel from the public, from early residents, so we can start to build this picture in our head of what a potential facility may look like. And I'll just start to weed out ideas as well. And one of the things we see is that we did out the idea of a larger regional facility that would be great, but that's not something we have that type of. So, from there, what we did is we logged all the red and green dots, green to red S's, red to R's, summarized with a table. One thing that is a point of clarification, at that public meeting, there's maybe thirty-five to thirty-eight people. We did feel that that was extremely low representation and inaccurate decision from, we'd recommendations to do an initial survey, trying to determine more population than what the prior study had, eight hundred fifty respondents. That is a very good response, right? We would be looking more for something in that range as opposed to the thirty-five that Right, so this kind of summarizes what I just said, not a very good data sign or data set recommended for. So, then what we did is we looked at, really narrowed it on two sites. One is existing pool site, Mel Street, and the other one is at the ice shelter in Long Mander Park. And with it, we did both two concepts that are really very similar for both. One is what we call a neighborhood style pool, smaller in size, smaller in operation expenses, smaller than this overhead in general. The next one we would call a community pool, really serves the whole community, you know, the bigger sort of parking lot lifeguards. Concept one, there's imagery of all this in there. We do the parking lot in Santa Monica, we have lap lanes, six lap lanes, you have a zero entry feature, a drop slide diving boards, services live flight and cell, lot of X's. So, that's concept one. This is the same thing in concept four of Long Mander. So, the pros, it was most desired at that public meeting, but again, it was a small public meeting turnout. Some of the cons, it's the most expensive, you have to, the pool you're tearing up, you're putting it on, a high level pro con for that one. So, the alternate to that, what we looked at was a smaller pool, two thousand square foot pool as opposed to seventy-five square foot pool, option one, that had four lap lanes, included some lap swim, a bunch of swim meets, won't have diving, you can, you can put a dive. And that's what we guided by the code in terms of how, in terms of the limiting staff. We have some size, that's criteria. But then it also afforded you about a fifteen hundred, two thousand size, square foot sides, splash pad with some great features, services on children as well, shade structures, that area.
One of the things I'd like to just point out on this, as we look at the two different options for both sites, is a concept along these lines really. One of the things I'd like to just point out on this, as we look at the two different options for both sites, is a concept along these lines really drops down your operational cost for the facility. Drops down the required certified staff that there are to run it. And it's just something that I think is worth pointing out because, as you know, and some of you may have seen, staffing aquatic centers can be a challenge from time to time. So this was just an option that we thought gave you the ability to get that new facility with lots of amenities, but also gave you the ability to have a lower footprint, a lower overhead to do it.
Can I, can I interrupt the question?
Yep.
I'm sorry. So the first option would be how many, what would the staffing requirement for lifeguard be versus this?
Yep, in the, in the first option, we figured that you would have six on duty guards that would be, that would need to be certified staff. And that would also then have two rotation guards. So depending on what the final concept would be and what amenities were put in it, that number could go up or down. But with the, with the larger community pool or, am I saying?
Yeah.
Neighborhood pool.
Remember those community pools.
Trying to stay away from the regional aquatic center where we're, where we're trying to bring in from all different areas. You're still looking at a fairly decent sized lifeguard and staff, probably fairly comparable to what you have now. With a few extra guards to allow for rotation and water slide coverage and the different amenities.
So this, so this is, you said that was six?
Yep, and this concept technically would require no certified staff at the size level that we're talking about. I do know that in some of our meetings, I don't think that it was, that it was agreed that it probably wouldn't be a good idea to have no staff. That we would still want management staff, we would still want lifeguards available at the facility, but it would not be required to have as many on duty guards in order to open up all the different attractions.
And the other one would not be able to be available if we're not fully staffed, is that correct?
For, for the most part, we, you can, you know, there, there are ways that you can close down certain zones. You know, so your water slide towers would typically require someone to release the swimmers from the top, someone to be there to catch the swimmers in the catch basin or be in the water when the swimmers exit the slide. So if, you know, if we wanted to staff for something different or morning lap swim and things like that, you could shut down certain areas of the facility, not have them available. But in order to open, you would need certified staff on site for that one.
Yeah, so we're trying to give you what would be, this is a little more than entry level, but it still keeps you offering aquatic option for your community. The other one is really, here's a community pool.
So, so this one wouldn't need certified staff, is it because that pool is really shallow?
Well, it's because, two things. That pool's under two thousand square feet and it's only a little five feet. So that's the caveat, because we have to stay, that's why you lose the diving program. You could have made that, you could have made a residential pool, it doesn't matter.
And I think it's fair to say, and we tried to keep the lap concept, but lap swimming, from what I gathered in the public meetings and in talking with school committees, very prevalent. And this would be a tough pool to program, much of a competitive program.
And we've done these differently where instead of lap pools, we're giving three floating, right, three quarters. It's just a different style. Right, and move to the next one. So the next one is this similar, okay, new pros, cons. Like we said, it's a low entry cost for construction. At this site, it is a little higher because you do not exist in building, you don't exist in a building, you have to be something like that. Right, sorry, you're fresh, so you're not familiar with that, so. But on the pros, it is a lot less operating cost and less of a danger on staffing. Move to the next one. Same concept, this allows us to have more space in the existing ice shelter, do a little addition, often the lap's been seen there. Same sort of features, isn't it, since the scale? Same pros, same cons. On the plus side of this, this is the least expensive of the four options. Because you don't have the, that one actually started that press. Same, you do have existing building, we can capture some of that basement area to use for mechanicals. We're not building as much of a building, we're constructing as much of a building on this site, so very similar to both the cons. Option four.
Do you want me to go to four?
Yeah.
One thing, but two, three and four at Longacre. You use the building, but you're breaking out a wall, so it's going to disspan the current.
Yes.
It will need some more space and more current.
Yeah, there's an addition for both. The addition for the large one is bigger than the addition for the small, because we need more changing area, we need more toilets and restroom area. It just, it has a bigger capacity and it needs a bigger space for it.
We'll see if that happens in this picture.
Yeah, and the one thing to, to make note of is it allows you to still use the shelter for ice room, even when you have the building to the, the additional little lap for the summer. So you're, and now you're really consolidating two buildings in one, right, so you can kind of get rid of the, get rid of the property. In terms of having to update, maintain, centralize, but it takes up some part of the area. Similar features, we tried to really scale it to where you didn't have these big enormous water slides in Longacre Park. Kind of do that via, not really popular, I think we see just by the, by the neighborhood. But this is an option that gives you a centralized facility. It still keeps your ice rooms intact, doesn't, still light, you're bothering them. But you still have enough of a high gear range of sun for at least getting out. It just does a nice job of consolidating. Pro standpoint, this is a more cost effective option to create site on Santa Monica. From a con standpoint, we did get a lot of the heavy input back from the Longacre residences that showed up. It's a little bit higher construction cost and not as much as we do it easily in the site. The other thing that you can find is that parking lot that is to the south is the schools, this is intentional and you have a work ethic to use that parking lot during the summer. If you can't do that, then you have to find a parking for this facility. Interestingly enough, the parking installed is at this location versus what's in here in our pool are with different installments. So there are problems there. And this is just, this is what we saw, right? We saw all the green dots on the Santa Monica big pool. We saw a lot of red dots on the Longacre big pool.
Other questions?
Yes.
On, on the Longacre, is the skid and rink as it exists now still intact?
It, yes and no. It has had some little reshaping of the south edge of it. Otherwise, the large area that's to the west side and what's out in front of the ice shelter, that's all still there. It may be affecting five to 10% of that entire area.
And then as far as the cost of, the construction being not as costly, you take it into account, if you're not going to rebuild the pool on the existing location, it'll be cost still in current site or something. So, but to still take the old pool out, still, still faster.
We did just straight up apples to apples, new construction, that other site is vacated, it has costs associated with that, or there's service debt. We did not include service debt or anything of that nature in terms of prepping Santa Monica site or something. We just left it with a straight part of construction cost or a part of construction cost.
I think I understand that, but if, if the Longacre site is being built, it's costing less to do.
Is it?
But that, if, if it was built at Longacre, the old pool and everything about it still has to be taken out, it's still a cost.
Yeah, eventually.
So is that included anywhere in the cost of construction in that Longacre?
No, we did not add dental of Santa Monica site, we're taking it out to a Longacre cost.
So would it be, would it be better had they flushed in, so we still could flush out?
Well, it's speculative because you don't, we, it may not be our expense. We could, we could sell that, in theory, we could sell that property and that would be a buyer expense, depending on what the buyer and the seller negotiate.
You're giving away. No, it's, well, I just added.
Your concept, right? Your concept?
Yeah, looking at this graphic, going with the community pool with all, since the higher level amenities, it looks like the difference between the, you know, concept one, concept four is seven hundred thousand dollars. Estimated, so it would cost seven hundred thousand dollars more to do it at the current site.
Remember, we already started tearing up the marketing, trying to build a new first name, there's just a lot of.
Yeah, I just wanted to get sort of the magnitude in mind. You know, four and a half million dollar, four to four and a half million dollar project is seven hundred thousand dollars.
And we're struggling, oh, I'm sorry, when you look in your packet, when we did the net service calculations, we picked the midpoint of the construction costs just because it was the midpoint, it's, you know, the best guess we could ask. So when you look at that, that's, this slide is where that number came from. What's wrong?
Is this a pool you don't have worry with parking?
That's a gap parking there.
Right, that's gone, that's gone.
Or you could have a parking.
You have that frequency, you have to have a green on the school.
Well, that, that parking lot there wouldn't be enough for the pool.
Yeah, there's the same.
It would be, yeah.
There would be two smaller spaces over there.
He said, there's only two parking spots difference if you use the school in the current pool.
I mean, I know that there's been some discussion of maybe building a pool on the parking lot over here by Parker and locations and then I guess you didn't know where the pool was at the parking lot, is there a way to rewind that to some option?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, we didn't look at that. We took it out of the power report, it was the highest of all options. Part of it is, part of the pacing of it as well. Now you're, you're, you are tearing out part of it, did you? Now you have to build another hole versus, you know, you put a pool on the pool, there's some less sort of work there. So you're taking back some of these, the hole that you have that was the most expensive. But yeah, we did study that some question. These are our, our hard construction costs and so like I said, we go search that, none of that is put in here. This is operation cost, man along with you, please.
So this just gives us concept one and four and concept two and three, really doesn't change between the sites as far as staffing goes. We used a similar model to what you currently have where you've had one pool manager with two assistant managers. And then we separated out lifeguards and instructor, and I, I believe that when we did this, there was some mixing in our numbers. So your, your certified lifeguards for your open swim and your daily is this number here. And then when we want to staff the pool for swim lessons and fitness and programming, these two numbers were small. So I just want to point that out in here.
I do want to mention that there are some costs that are not included in there. We did have a discussion with Blake on the phone. I feel, I don't think he tracked with us. Because Mike has given the Ares the pool budget, which you know, our pool budget's pretty small. But none of those costs are included in there. So there are costs that are described to the pool that are not reflected in here. And I did, we did talk to Blake on the phone, have asked him to go back and add those costs in here because his staff, his staff costs are too low. So for example, Mike's time, so he's on the pool.
DPW.
Four months.
DPW workers.
Yeah, it was DPW. There's, there's other costs that should be reflected in this chart that are nowhere in here.
Okay.
And they will make you, they will make a substantial difference to what these totals have.
So, so will we be getting that updated?
Yes, you will.
Well, yeah, you guys would up sort of that.
What we're permitted to do is that when we get community feedback and those numbers go finalize and everything, so for us, we're, we're a hundred percent. So we're gonna finish that out.
But, you know, Michael's given that to Blake, you guys can all catch up on that.
Yep.
Those costs do you need to play? Insurance costs?
Would those costs, would those costs change the relative differences between the two options? Or are those common denominator costs that we're not, that we're not looking at right now?
I think if we're talking about Mike's times, probably same number out of both.
I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess that any change would be small. I guess you could, you could make, the only argument I can think about Tom is that you could argue that it takes less of his time to manage the splash pad concept because you don't have all that staff. He's spending a lot of time right now just trying to find bodies to be lifeguards, which is a whole staffing discussion we'll have later. That kind of goes away a little bit when you do the splash pad because you don't really need eight people, six plus the two rotations. But beyond that, most of your costs are the same. You're still gonna have a DPW guy down there, you're still gonna have, you know, the, our insurance in the league is actually pretty cheap, pool or not. So the change between having the basin and having the splash pad, is what I call it, is probably not going to be much different. So I'm gonna say the cost might be slightly different, but it's not going to be a great.
On a relative basis. Very good questions. Are, are we about done with this?
We are. I think there was one other slide that was just kind of general overall operations cost. So we did have a summary in there where we did put a staff in there and then we started adding kind of a whole different options that we give a revenue portion as well.
I have a question on this because, you know, the managers provided us with that service and these projections show for the one concept, the community pool, forty thousand, forty some thousand dollars of annual loss and the other one about half that. But I, I was trying to understand the income numbers. Right now, we are a little over a hundred thousand income on our pool annually, but I believe that's right. And so they're projecting, and this, this assumes that the revenues are, are going to be like seventy-five percent higher on the one pool and thirty percent higher on the other, thirty-five percent. So I, you know, that's, given the demographics we're dealing with, you know, maybe that's realistic, I don't know, but it's just, we just need to understand that currently we're, our revenues are way more than the most.
And that's a payback on that. And I'm hoping that after you get to this final, you know, obviously very much here, I was hoping that you could spell out your assumptions. Which is, because that would be very helpful because we need to be able to go back and say, do we, obviously we have to assume something to go summer. So I would just say, is this an assumption that we endorse enough to, you know, when you're doing, you know, sensitivity analysis practices, which assumptions do you change?
Right, and, and that's, those are both excellent points because what you're seeing here is you'll see things like pro rules and events, you see concessions, prior years in Europe, basically farting out concessions. So there's some assumptions there. This will be based off of what we see our sort of practical community plan doing. But if you start to change those, or you start to not do those things, then they will, they will have an impact on you. So we'll ask you to put those assumptions in there. I will just show you, I was in Brooklyn some day, we did that, the tournament where, when we had that last year. So I just talked to the director and just asked her how memberships come about. And she told me they were around six hundred and fifty memberships, these are family memberships. Asked her where they were before with the pool, just similar to what we have. Asked her where they were before with the pool, just similar to what we have, and she said they still don't get a hundred. So that's actually a bump, that's probably a short lived bump, it's going to come back down, but it does give you.
What's, what's the night day difference between what they have and what they have? Facility wise?
Yeah, they have a lot, like you have, diagonal like you have, a wave pool like you have, various features that now they have. You know, it's a nice facility, right? Um, so to your point about seventy-five percent, yeah, they, they definitely saw that in that song.
Oh, what was the cost per?
That one was four three. Parking construction cost.
And then would they, like before the, with the old pool, like, did they raise the family membership? No, but just like the price of the membership for people who want, because I mean, are these all made out of assumptions that were like maintained the same way?
I can't, I can't answer if they raised or not, they did, you know, there's not as much you can do. What they did see is they saw a, she told me the data, I remember she was twenty-two seconds. They generally were holding there also like now, granted, that's rural, right? You know, maybe it was a long way here, it's much more complicated, but, um, what they found were families that came loving, and that's just where they go now. But you never see some variation, but in fact, why, why can't you raise, you start to find committees other than black lights and dining board. Maybe with space and shade and whatever parties, you see the activity, but it just doesn't work.
And I'll just point out, as I started working on the season pass numbers for the different facilities, I did use, um, cost comparisons Burlington and I used cost comparisons to, uh, Appleton, Burb. I know Appleton, Burb is in a bigger city, but it's a, it's similar setup where there are other options very close. So, you know, I used their season pass numbers and then I took numbers from your guys' records that, that we got that showed what your attendance had been and how many passes you'd sold over previous years. You know, and we have seen in that, in those records, there were some declines as the years went on in the number of season passes that were sold. And so I did, you know, use some assumptions with a newer facility that you're going to pull from a larger area and we're going to see those, see the pass numbers go up. I didn't go up quite as high as Burlington, you know, with that type of job.
I would say six hundred memberships. Right. But I'm going to make that assumption.
Mr. Konzett?
Yeah, uh, and I would just echo the, um, looking at the expense side too, uh, and getting, giving us a better understanding there. In that regard, um, I, I know that, uh, staff has given us a, um, a five-year summary of expenses and revenues. Um, I did go back and look at our budget, um, uh, we are budgeted to, uh, for a full subsidy of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars this year. Um, there's kind of good news and bad news in that. Uh, the, the, the bad news is that, you know, pool is, uh, we've had to subsidize it by a substantial amount of money every year. But that means that if we have a new pool, uh, we will be paying for debt service and maybe, you know, an operating loss with, um, uh, the pool. I mean, we're already paying, we're already subsidizing it by the pool operation by, you know, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, that's money that, um, is, we are expending right now. Um, so if you look at, you know, um, like three hundred thousand dollars in debt service and then operating losses, that's just kind of nothing worth spending right now, so.
Would you like to spend a minute to conclude?
Yeah, I mean, this was actually our last slide.
Oh, all right, well, thank you, this was very interesting and helpful.
Yeah, and thank you for the opportunity, we really enjoyed it.
Well, I had, I had, can I ask a couple more questions?
Yeah.
Um, citizen input, uh, you already pointed out that, um, we don't really have a representative cross-section right now. That's why you're going to do another survey. Um, and I just wonder if there's way, if there's another, if there, have you considered other kinds of ensuring that we get a, you know, a, a representative cross-section of the community, uh, weighing in on, on this pool? Uh, or is the survey the way to do it, can you target interviews or can you target interviews or anything like that?
Yeah, I know, we haven't really gone into great detail about interviews, first of the survey, we've got to talk about the survey. Uh, I think we also talked about some more of the, the support.
I mean, sort of focus groups or, you know, it's something that, like, I, you know, the observation is that sending out a print survey and having people check boxes, uh, gives you one kind of information, but sitting down with somebody and talking about it, and everybody with a group of people, I think gives you another kind of quality of information. So that's, I just asked that you think about that. Um, a couple of things about, um, Longacre site, uh, the arcing is there, but the one thing I noticed about the redesign of the current pool site is that there's a drop off section, which is, uh, I think a desirable feature. Uh, so I just wanted to highlight that. Uh, and the other issue that you haven't talked about, but I see it as planned, is on the Longacre site, we do have, um, uh, providing screening and things, but I would anticipate that, um, uh, the neighbors across the street are, are going to be very concerned about noise and that. So, um, I just wanted to hear more about, um, addressing that concern.
Yeah, everything you stated just there, that, that was a lot of the, I forgot, it was, it was a lot of the Longacre neighborhood, uh, especially those that are right across the street, uh, definitely concerns on noise, concerns about taking away green space. A lot of those are in the cogs section. Uh, yeah, we show our bodies, but it's going to take time to make sure. It was, for those individuals, it was, um, it was a very, it was a sore point. They were, they were not happy.
I can actually address a second, your first question quickly as well, too. On the survey, that's out of the scope of this. I looked at one of the next steps that we want to report, and I think there is one thing on the paper online, just about in this survey, combined with, whether that encompasses other public meetings or focus groups, I think there's consideration about taking the, one of the, one of the first slides you interviewed showed the more recognition we could afford was more of a community-wide survey. Um, I think, I don't know if you were aware of the community meeting that we had, there was an ice storm and that was one factor. One, uh, all for the transparency of public meetings, but what I have kind of noticed amongst the multiple meetings we've had on this topic is, um, they have been getting, um, biased heavily, you know, tended much more to that people of Longacre to the point where I actually think that there's a lot of voices that were silenced because no one wants to kind of be the person that almost kind of speaking up against what is, a group of very concerned, even upset people. Um, there were a few people that attended that meeting, uh, only in February, that sent, uh, very well-written and documented points, um, in favor of the Longacre site, for example, on Longacre, but they wouldn't speak on meeting because, uh, some of them's just kind of the, uh, I guess I would say the, the nature, the kind of what, the feeling of what that meeting was. So I think that's a, a consideration to have, and actually, one of the ones of the citizens that wrote it there is that, you know, I should have supported Longacre, they've lived in South Longacre, um, across the street. It wasn't someone that lived completely away from a site that didn't develop.
The, the, the next step for the board is, as you can see on the standards of the city agenda, is to dispatch and authorize the staff to solicit quotes, um, to do a survey. So why don't we take that, does everyone have any questions about, um, what we're being asked to improve?
Well, I, I guess, uh, I don't know if the concept of community survey is broad enough to include, uh, something like focus groups. It is, I mean, survey is, eventually think of it as a one-time thing, but it's also kind of a collection of community, uh, information. But I would encourage, uh, the, uh, the pool group to, uh, look at other kinds of, of testing, uh, concepts of, uh, community, uh, that, that makes a difference.
Let's make one prepared, appreciate that.
Yeah, I think the, the providers have shown us that we do engage with the instructor, we're encouraged to go beyond just an electronic or tech box survey to gather the information.
Let me just add one more thing on that. I, I do think this is a critical part of the process. We're talking about a major expenditure that we're going to be not only paying initially, but for twenty-plus years for debt and, uh, maybe hence in subsidizing the operations. Um, and it's also an amenity of, that has been a part of the village for, uh.
Thirty years.
Yeah, so, so, uh, and it has some potential for people feeling like, uh, uh, a decision was made with it, uh, giving them the opportunity to weigh in. So I think, uh, we should, uh, I'm in favor of authorizing staff to get, uh, quotes for further, um, uh, community, uh, uh, survey of, of options. I think we can narrow, we got, you know, we got a lot of information and we get fine-tuned, and I think we can, uh, uh, ask questions or put together questions that will give us useful information.
I, I, I would make the motion to, um, authorize staff to solicit quotes, um, to develop a community survey.
Consider the second.
Second.
By Mr. Pratt. Any further discussion on that? All those people say aye. All opposed, staff, who has your direction? And thank you very much for such an instructive presentation.
Thank you very much.
Do you make sure though that you redo those expenditure charts and provide us with it?
Yeah, I just wrote it down on my copy.
And I, I would just recommend maybe you put those by Michael and I before you go to trouble print and make sure they're tight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move to item, uh, six D. Um, the next series of items we discussed at some length have reports from the plant commission. Six D is the, I would team with relation of the time share property. Um, Mr. Konzett, I think from the plant commission, I have one question to Mr. Konzett, as a matter of fact, because I agree this, the, uh, the restriction will remain that, um, a, um, an Airbnb or short-term rental of six days or less is prohibited.
Uh, let's, um, be clear on one thing, uh, six D dealing with time share property, uh, is, uh, only deals with, I'll say, correcting our zoning code.
Thank you, thank you for that, I, I guess that my, well, well, I would drop my question and re-ask you when we get to six D.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, and, uh, in that regard, I, I'll say that, um, I think, I've, this might be, I think the six D is, is, uh, fairly straightforward, um, we've got a, a council has advised the staff we need to remove this provision from the zoning code, and so I would, uh, move that we act on the ordinance to repeal and recreate the definition of time share property for the village of Box Point and set forth in the immediate.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Toronto, um, discussion? All those people say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, uh, six D carries six E, the ordinance to create regulation of vacation rental establishments for the village of Box Point. I put my question to Mr. Konzett.
Uh, that is correct. Uh, as I understand it, and I would, uh, uh, invite the village to train to, uh, correct me or amplify whatever, or whatever. Um, as this is, as proposed, uh, there is, uh, uh, a, uh, the former prohibition, which has just been removed from the zoning code, which is a hundred and twenty days, drops down to six days. So, uh, uh, it would not permit rentals shorter than six days. Um, it, uh, for rentals that are, uh, uh, less than, uh, twenty-nine days, uh, twenty-nine days and less, uh, it would be subject to the village licensing. Anything over twenty-nine days is basically unregulated. Uh, so, uh, if you're talking about somebody renting their house, uh, for, uh, more than a month, uh, it's not regulated. If it's, uh, uh, for a shorter period, uh, then it would be subject to the, these, uh, restrictions that would, uh, are set forth in the ordinance. And, uh, that is what the, uh, the changes that the, uh, plant commission recommends, uh, to the ordinance that was first presented to it by council, like you're hearing here, are set forth with the needed materials and they're all armed and ready. Um, and that's.
Is that it, right? Yep, further questions on six E? All right, I will that, uh, the board, um, approve the creation, um, of a regulation of vacation rental establishments for the village of Box Point as, uh, set forth in the materials supporting item, uh, six E. I second that. Discussion, all those people. Discussion, Mr. Toronto.
Um, extensive discussion, actually, I'm going to, uh, that's currently written, uh, I'm, uh, opposed to this, uh, this regulation, I'm in favor of it, I think there's, um, things are substantially, uh, need substantial corrections to it. Um, uh, to begin with, I don't like the, the topic, even calling it a vacation rental. Um, we're talking about, you know, we're, we're living in an era of, of, and Virgo, Airbnb, these other types of online, uh, ability to, to rent properties to people. Those aren't always done, and I think it's a misstatement to say that those are done for purely vacation or recreational purposes. Um, myself included and a number of people that I know of, we use those services for business travel, to attend conferences and educational programs. Um, and, um, I didn't use it at all for recreational purposes, I was there to, to, uh, to, uh, do business matters. And I, myself and, and plenty of other people, how they use those, is they just don't like to, they're oftentimes more affordable than getting a hotel room, um, with the taxes and other fees that go along with getting a hotel room. They can even be more convenient and depending on your personality, could be a little bit more hospitable, um, to do that. So, uh, you know, that's one of the items, I, I, I also am a person, I think that a lot of people, that citizens in the village and homeowners, um, would disagree with the less than six days prohibition. Um, I, you know, again, myself included, I've often thought of renting out, uh, uh, my house for things like Summerfest, the Harley Davidson rally. Um, in a couple of years, the DNC is going to be here, Ryder Cup, so some major events actually coming to the, to the Milwaukee area. Um, I know, uh, and I'm friends with a, uh, Harley rider from out of town, and we even discussed about it until it didn't happen, him renting, uh, my home for a Harley rally. Um, uh, there's several other things that I, I just kind of think that there's some, that maybe this would be where Eric Larson could come. So I think that provisions of this, I think, are just generally outdated. Um, asking for, um, you know, legal name and no initial address, phone number of all people that are going to be occupied that are eighteen years of older or older yet using programs like Airbnb, is, it's, that's not needed, it's just the main contact that's there. Um, I'm not certain that you really need to kind of go, uh, beyond that. Um, I don't know much about the state tourist rooming house license and providing a copy of that, but that caused me to, I had some concern about that. Um, proof that vacation rental steps. Prove that vacation rental statute complies with Wisconsin personal building code, how do you do that? I think that's a little bit restricted towards, again, the, going back to the economy that we lived in, still live in. E, out of E three, I just, I made a general note to myself of no, how into the details of what that is at this point in time. E four, I don't agree with the three parking stalls, so that has to do also with just the length of some driveways in the village that may not be long enough to accommodate that. Let's see, I'm still on E, yeah, I'm on E thirteen, I put a no in there on that. Copy of names for, just seems like this is a lot of owners, kind of some people work that's not needed. I generally think it's good public policy to, when you create and change policy, that it's policy that citizens are going to reasonably comply with. I don't think citizens are reasonably compliant, I think a lot of homeowners are going to do kind of what they want to do. And I don't think that's great to, to approve a policy where someone wants to run out a, you know, property for, again, a three-day prohibition, that they're basically just going to do whatever they want. And I also, you know, it's kind of like having people that you don't know stay at your property, it's, it's a little more of a philosophical issue to, of like, what people think about, whether the homeowner is there or not. There's also sites that have something there, one's called Couch Surfing, and there's another one that's similar to it, where there's actually no rental fee involved, and if people, strangers come over to, other people that want to host, people travel, they stay on their couch or in a guest bedroom. Whether that is, you know, again, these aren't family members, these aren't acquaintances, these are complete strangers that do this for, to travel any places affordably. So with, my vote's been no on this for other reasons, and I ultimately, I'd really like to send a second to the plan commission for review.
That's been sent.
I understand Mr. Crabbitt's concerns, however, I don't agree with them. I think that, you know, I, I've seen another side of this, where people that I know have been involved with rentals next door to them, and they've run exception of that way. And some of them have actually come in front of the board for possible litigation, and we've through some processes with that. But, you know, I, I don't feel like needing to make, I, I understand that we are making things possible, I don't think that we need to make everything as easy as possible. I'm not convinced that having two or ten or two hundred homes in our village, renting out homes on a regular basis is advantageous to the future of the village. So I, I would recommend, I would address in the way that it is written at the moment, because it allows it to happen, it doesn't allow it to happen necessarily as easily as someone might want, but I don't hope that that has to be a problem.
Further discussion, Mr. Crabbitt?
I, I think both sides are right to a degree, but because I think both are right, they should go back to the planning committee. I, I think, Mr. Crabbitt, really the best point is, it's not a good public policy that people are going to circumvent. And you brought up five, six, seven different events that may be coming up that a person may want to, in many different ways, rent out the house and not even comply with it. So I guess I, but I have to ask, what's the impetus in making this sort of, was there an initial cause, was there a problem, what, what's our...
Well, I can speak to that, I guess. I, it was state law that caused us to bring this up, because we, before now, were quite restrictive, a hundred and twenty days. You could not rent your home for fewer than one hundred consecutive days at a time. That's been the law in the village for a decade. This brings that hundred and twenty days down to six, because state law tells us that that's what we have to do.
Mr. Bonsa?
Yeah, and the history is that we have had property rented out that have, that have caused nuisances in the, in the neighborhood, and we had limited ways to do anything about it. There are, now with this, this change in the, in the state law, there are people who are building places that just, in residential neighborhoods, residential zoning, with just the intention of renting out vacation homes. And what we're saying is, with this ordinance, you need to have a minimum of a six-day rental or seven, six or seven, I, seven, really. And, you know, and then comply with the, with the procedure requirements as far as, you know, filling out forms and all that sort of thing. But I think it is important, I think it's very important to preserving the residential character of the village and avoiding problems with properties in residential areas becoming, you know, a, having, being used as rent, vacation rental properties, and whether you call it a vacation rental or not, the state law calls it a tourist, like, something like tourist, tourist rooming hours, so, but to be able to keep the character of the Fox Point residential, and still people, allow people to rent out over, you know, a week or more, avoiding the one, two, three, four day kind of constant turnover, which is very disruptive to, to neighborhoods.
I agree with Mr. Bonsa on this. I don't find the, the ordinance as proposed to be humorous. I think that compared to what we have permitted in the past, and now our required permit, this is a sea change, broadening the opportunity for short-term rentals. I think, but we're, we're called, nothing is written in stone. If we want to change this later, we can. If we want to permit shorter-term rentals based on our experience with this, we can. But I think going incrementally, for us, probably makes the most sense, Mr. Njich.
I need a reminder, how does this dovetail with our members of non-related people under one group?
Good question.
Because we were not allowed to sell the house to the nuns.
Well, as, as we can, I'll refer to the village attorney, as I understand, more than three unrelated adults exceed the definition of a family for purposes of residential zoning, or restrictions on, on residential properties. I'm not sure how the interplay with that works with short-term rentals.
The short answer is that we're preempted. A short-term rental, the state law says that a short-term rental is a permitted residential use of property. And even though our zoning code says you have to have a family, which is, you know, fewer than three or more unrelated people, I don't think we're going to be able to enforce that for these short-term rentals.
Okay, so, so a number, so a group of people could come in for whatever they want to do for a week in the house, four or five adults unrelated?
Yes.
Okay.
This was part of the contractors' bill of rights, if you remember, to catch all the assistance, maybe this was part of that that came out of that.
It's part of the same.
Yeah, it is part of the mother, that's what we all called it, but, you know, from a policy perspective, it's like a lot of other practices that we have, we have a complaint-driven process largely in the village. This gives us the opportunity to be in compliance with state law, which we're currently not. And, but still gives us the tools to use if and when we need that. And I would, I would amplify that, I mean, village manager points out that this, urgency is only going to come into play if there's something, there's a problem, because, because otherwise, nobody, nobody doesn't notice anything, because we are complaining. But it does give us the tools to manage those problem situations. So I think it's important to have that in, in our, in our toolbox.
Mr. Crabbitt, would you like to ask for it?
Oh, no, it's more just a legal question, on that six days, the minimum is of six consecutive, or two weeks of the second. So the state law, does that preempt any local laws, so like a Wisconsin Dallas, or something that has one that's less than that? Would that be out of compliance if someone, someone just put out Airbnb for three days or a V, or V L?
What the state law says is that we cannot prohibit short-term rentals that are longer than seven days. So we could, we could allow three days, we could allow two days, we can allow whatever we wanted, but if we're going the most restrictive we can be, is to prohibit six days.
Well, I, one last, two last.
Yeah, and I would say, it is an ordinance that does own code provisions, so it's, although I would, what was doing, and it's something that can be changed in the future.
All right, I think we're, yes, one more.
Thank you for your useful. Just on the, I don't mean enforcement on the noise and loud or unloyal behavior, it's still a responsibility to the homeowner. We have regulations that come to that, and we have noise and light, you can't park cars overnight around the street, those are already in place. So I, I actually think this could be beneficial for citizens to, potentially, positive to earn some money sometimes for things, when there's major events in the area.
Mr. Njich? Yeah. All right, I think we're ready for a vote. My show has had, all those in favor of the ordinance as proposed, raise your hand. Opposed, all right, the motion carries. We thank you for such a handy discussion. We move to six, act. This is the ordinance to repeal and recreate the village code concerning wireless telecommunications, mobile service facilities. Again, this is an issue that is brought to us by virtue of our state legislature, which prided our abilities to restrict these items that we have in the past. Any further questions about this? Very well, then I move to adopt the ordinance as proposed. Second. Second by Mr. Bonsa, further discussion. All those who can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Says G, the ordinance to create section two ninety-two thousand five, concerning distractions and encroachments in the village rights of way. Questions about this?
Just to, just point out, I, I think this is prompted by the, whether it's communication changes, it was federal or state, but this actually is a good ordinance to have in any case, because it helps us regulate what's going on in the railway.
Would you like to make the motion?
I will, that we adopt the ordinance to create section two ninety-two dash five point five of the village of Fox Point village code concerning instructions and encroachments in the village of Fox Point.
I second. Discussion, all those who can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we move to new business, the item taken from consent amendment of, let's see, three L, this application is to draw and move to table or to postpone indefinitely this conditional use permit application. Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to postpone indefinitely. New business seven A, request to gift from Kent Line Decker to the village of Fox Point. Maybe I'll take this. This item has a fascinating twenty-year history with the village, and the file that the village manager shared really goes back to that apartment. Kent Line Decker lives outside of Park Falls, Wisconsin, which is a long way away from here. But he grew up in the village, and about twenty years ago, a wife should back up his head. He is a direct descendant of the original settlers of Fox Point, the Dutch settlers, or buried in the historic cemetery just south of Doctor's Park. That gives Mr. Line Decker the right to request burial in the cemetery. And he made such a request, which was approved by the village board, I believe in two thousand, by resolution. So he is sat, if that's the right word, to be buried in the Dutch cemetery, and he intends to be buried there. He is ninety-one years old. He lives by himself on thirty acres of mostly forested property outside of Park Falls. There are several acres that he's used to farm, there's a house and a lawn, and some other farm constructions on the property. The notes in the village file suggested that Line Decker might want to make a gift at death to the village. But that development idea was never pursued until last month by me. And I contacted Line Decker, and then talked to his attorney, and then got the village manager and the village attorney involved in the discussion. And it turns out that Mr. Line Decker still wishes to leave the gift to the village. In fact, he wishes to leave his entire estate to the village, and he intends to do so. Now, one may ask why. Mr. Line Decker does have, he had four children, three survived, they're all adults, as you might know, but it is his wish to, to still leave his estate to the village of Fox Point. So what we can work out in a series of discussions with Line Decker and his attorney is this. Line Decker, Line Decker has a, has very capable attorneys in Phillips, Wisconsin, which is eight, two miles south of Park Falls. Line Decker wishes, has maybe new will to leave his estate to the village of Fox Point. We have a copy that will have been shared with us. But more specifically, he wants to make an immediate gift to the village of his real property and preserve a life estate, meaning the property, if the board will accept the gift, will transfer title to the village of Fox Point, but Line Decker can live in the house as long as he wishes for his life, and maintain and pay taxes on the property until he dies or until he decides to move out. That deed has been prepared, and Line Decker feels, is prepared to sign it. There has been an appraisal over on the property. Unfortunately, it was, it was not done in time to share with you tonight. So I can't tell you how much the estate is worth, or at least the real property portion of the estate. I would guess it exceeds a hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure of the number. There's also items of personal property that Line Decker likely will leave, including farming owners and other items in the farm, yard, and adjacent lots, and in the house. I have expressed to Line Decker that I want to go up to, leave him, thank him personally. I've set a schedule to do that for April three, twenty nineteen, and I would like the board's approval to present to Mr. Line Decker a proclamation... And I would like the board's approval to present to Mr. Line Decker a proclamation thanking him for his gift, the language of which you see in your packet. Okay, back to his history in Fox Point. Line Decker has been moved to this area in 1943. He lived in the northern part of North Milwaukee. His father was hired to be the property manager, caretaker, and chauffeur to Fred Usinger Jr. for the Usinger Estate. The Usinger Estate gates are still standing on the corner of Ferry Chasm and Lake Rock. And it's still a secret. The estate was further to the north along, it was a very large estate at one time. So Line Decker's father was the caretaker and chauffeur. And Line Decker grew up there, delivered papers in Fox Point, he was the paper boy for many years, and went to the Fox Point School where his principal was Peter Stormy. And the family left the estate in 1943 when Usinger started selling off portions of it. Line Decker shared with me that Usinger was pro-German. And I guess at that point in the war decided it was best to start shedding some of his property down there. So they, the family moved in 1943, but Fox Point stayed with Line Decker until today. And his memories are so fond of the village and to the extent that he wishes to be buried in the cemetery, that it is his wish that the board accept this gift and in the context in which I just explained. Any questions?
Question. So is it the, it would be our intent then to create little Fox Point or would it be a self-care?
It would be a self-care. Well, it's up to board, actually. It's a board decision. We could, we could set up a retreat there if we wanted to, but I think we probably elect to.
And would he, once, and cash is assembled, isn't his preference to go towards something like a beautification project or general operating?
Unrestricted. He, his first preference was that money be set aside to maintain the cemetery. But staff pointed out that it costs the village little to maintain the cemetery. So we really don't need the quest for that purpose. He has not asked for any restrictions on it. Yes, Mr. Crowe?
Depending on the size of the estate and the sale of property, I think I might hear Line Decker pull.
Yeah, no, no. We could put it in Park Falls. We got thirty-five acres, we'd be a lot cheaper.
But no, especially when you see him, when you see him, I mean, he may actually like that idea, have his name on a pool. But that's not going to be, it's the same thing that just, they could, you're going to put a name on a pool, I think you're going to get an extra one, get more money.
No, it would be great.
Yeah.
But I think this is, yeah, this is great. I commend the village president for his work.
Mr. Coleman?
Is there a room in the cemetery for him? I just, you know.
I hope so. The board said almost twenty years ago he could be there. Yeah, I talked to Mike Currier, he said yes.
Yeah.
It was, it was poor action.
When was the last burial?
I, I, that's a good question.
He sent me a photo album of pictures. I think I could get an article.
He, there would be several articles out of this story. He reported to me that he has a large briefcase of historic materials that are now in the possession of his attorney, Phillips, that will be delivered to us for historical preservation and study.
What kind of action are we leading into?
Yes, I would ask the board to adopt a resolution accepting the gift and, and in support of the language of gratitude as reflected in the, in the act.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have to adopt a resolution?
I, I.
Last page.
I see a proclamation.
Oh, sorry, proclamation. Now, just as a point of order or a point, a point where proclamations can be adopted, you know, I don't think by the village president or by, by people of the board. In this case, I'll ask for people of the board.
So the proclamation thanks him, but it doesn't accept the gift. So I, I, I just, and I don't know that you want to accept the gift, so.
We have not done some of the, we haven't done the title search.
Good point.
We haven't done environmental studies.
We'll do the proclamation, it'll be settled later.
Yeah, that probably makes, that probably makes sense. We can.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I move to authorize a proclamation.
Second. Oh, Mr. Crowe, second. Further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I will present the proclamation to Mr. Line Decker on April 3rd, 2019.
And you can either show him the videotape of this sense of the conversation.
Would any member of this committee have an item I would refer to, Jerry? Here we go, move to, to, no. Nine announcements. I'll defer to Mr. Bronstein.
I'd like to report on the tree commission that met end of March. We've updated our recommended street tree list. We've identified some trees that have invasive tendencies, so watch for them after you come over. And we removed turkeys filters because they get cankers. If you haven't been by any tree woods, I encourage you to look at it. It looks kind of like it got hit by a bomb. All the ash trees have been removed. The good news is that we have two hundred and thirty trees that are going to be planted there in the fall. And the, and we're going to need lots of volunteers to help that, lots of volunteers to make the kind of community event. So you have to look out for that. We're targeting the weekends of October 5th and 12th. Finally, Arbor Day is coming up, the 26th, Friday. We adopted the resolution in the consent agenda. This is our thirtieth Arbor Day, and this is the first time we're going to have a Maple Dale school. So I invite all trustees to be there. I will not be able to be there, but you get a free tree. So I do recommend going.
My tree's still wrong from last year.
What?
I'm sure you said it wrong from last year.
Yeah, I have a bunch of them planted in different places.
Ms. Inge.
No.
Ms. Summer.
No.
Mr. Crowe? Thanks for the support on the pool work and just a note, we already kind of, with the next steps of cleaning survey, we've already taken some, taken some preliminary steps and that's positive.
Mr. Crowe?
I just want to note that the pool presentation on the new screen here was terrific, and I think it was a great decision to install this. And I see in the future more and more people coming in and using this, and it's so much better than looking at blurry, hard copies of little detail.
Thanks. Mr. Coleman? I wish to congratulate Mr. Crowe and Mr. Bronstein on their reelection to the board and look forward to working in the new term. I was pleased to represent the village of Fox Point yesterday at a rally in support of the Nicolay Boys Basketball State Championship at Nicolay High School. This was led by Mayor Kennedy of Glendale, and I wish to present to the board a Wilson basketball that is autographed by the state championship team and coaches. So we can, and each of the constituent communities, comprised of Nicolay High School, got one of these, and collective officials for each community were there to support and congratulate the team. So we, we have done the same.
Now, what happens with that?
We should frame that and put it out somewhere around, maybe somewhere in the village.
Maybe we can display it in our art corner or at the top.
Or a poster.
Yes, hopefully, it's a whole thing, it's a whole thing with the staff to appropriately display this. Mr. Village Manager?
I want to, I don't know what I had was, item H on consent agenda was, and it's not yet, because I want to just draw recognition books, I don't really know what we're going to do, but Municipal Clerks Week is coming up, and we just finished an election. And I want to commend both Kelly and Jeannie and all the election workers on the board because up until the last day, we were frankly still dancin' with the state elections commission as to whether or not we were going to use, we had electronic poll books, we're not using electronic poll books because it gets security changes and it's kind of screwed them up. Maybe it was, it was, it was kind of a mess. And, but both you ladies and all the election workers did a remarkable job, and not just on the elections, but all, so I want to commend the clerks. Well, their week, which is forthcoming, I wanted to make sure I'd be noticed to.
There you go. We're not done yet.
We're not done yet? Okay. And we have a table full of Badger books out there, electronic poll books, are Badger books?
That's.
That's why they don't work. They're golfer books. Never mind. We, next, next week, next month, sorry, next week, you will have the borrowing resolution, authorizing estimate we had with preparing the borrowing stuff for this year's capital. We were hoping to have any prepared last week, looking at the market, it's been following the municipal bottom market, been incredibly high amount of demand. At the current time, if we sold, we'd sell below two percent. So I just jinxed it. But, you know, hopefully, hopefully we get that going. We are planning, I have not seen any draft numbers from Wendy, the auditor, yet. We'll have an audit committee, maybe the first part of the year we like we could do. So we'll see what the numbers come out at. And next month, you will also see a report or hear a report or vote from Hugh Free on the one-year anniversary of our stock sign at Bradley and Regent, as he collects his data. The trailer is currently at, I don't remember, some cul-de-sac collecting data. I'm not sure why we're collecting data on the cul-de-sac, it's got the citizen ass works or they have it. Yeah, I don't know why. But it'll be moved in about a week or so, and then we'll collect the data and we'll compare it. He had, in the wintertime, collected just some, like a day or two's of data. So I haven't even given where it's going to turn out, but it'll be here next month.
I want to take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Crowe, move to adjourn. Second, Mr. Coleman, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries, we adjourn.